From President. So I will call the meeting of the Monroe Planning Board to order with the reporter staff rep called roles.
Richard Giercheck, Jennifer Smith here, Patrick Furr, Margaret Devio.
Here.
Ken Deal.
Here.
Mary Ann Raspberry.
Here.
Archie Morgan.
Here.
Parker Mills.
Here.
And I would like to also indicate that Luis Felipe is out on medical, he headed back circuit, so that's why he's not here. We knew Richard would not be here because he told us the last meeting. And Patrick Furr resigned.
Is that what I said?
I don't know. Just that he submitted his letter of resignation. He is the ETJ rep, so his seat's filled by Union County. So until we get a replacement, then we can use our alternative role for that.
So I need the alternate position.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, but we'll call him in. It's just Mr. Felipe was also absent, so there's still some staff. If he'd have been here, we would have been able to use both of them. Okay. And ask everybody to stand, sign the collective allegiance, remain standing for a moment silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up on the agenda, conflicts and interest. Basically, one, two, three, four issues per tonight. I know everybody had a chance to look at it. Does anybody have any conflicts and interests where they wish to be excused or? And noted, move on from that. Item four should be familiar to everybody, zoning map amendment for property located at twenty eight fifteen Bravo Place. Further identified as tax parcel zero nine dash one one two dash zero one six. This request is to rezone the property from general industrial to heavy industrial. Understand from staff that they've got their legal paperwork all squared away now.
Good evening, my name is Megan Brightard with the planning department. Tonight I'm here to present a zoning map amendment request regarding the property located at twenty eight fifteen Bravo Place. The subject property is located north of Bravo Place. The applicant is requesting a general rezoning of the subject property from GI, general industrial, to HI, heavy industrial. The property is currently undeveloped. The proposed use is not permitted in GI, which is, which is what the property is currently zoned. Parcels next to and across from the subject property are zoned general industrial. Parcels to the north are zoned RMD, residential median density. The land use and transportation plan indicates this area is manufacturing, logistics, and aerospace. This designation supports manufacturing and production at a variety of scales, including assembly, processing, warehousing, and distribution, bulk storage, and utility. Manufacturing, logistics, and aerospace areas are found to be major transportation assets and are generally buffered from surrounding development. Plus, if the uses that support or serve similar industrial uses typically locate nearby. Planning staff believes this request is consistent with the land use and transportation plan because the proposed rezoning to HI will allow the applicant to establish the use in an area designated for heavy industrial development. A rezoning notification sign will be posted ten days prior to the public hearing, and an official rezoning notification letter will be sent to the adjacent property owners located within one hundred fifty feet ten days prior to the public hearing. Planning staff recommends approval of the rezoning. The planning board will need to make a take action on the following items shown on the board, and there's a representative for the case here to answer questions as well.
Any questions for staff on this one? Who is Bravo Road, who owns that, whose responsibility is that to write?
Are you asking for maintenance? I believe it's the city in Monroe.
You've been out there waiting? I'm glad I picked up on that.
Oh, focus it on engineering.
Because they could be heavy, they're working on that. Other questions? Thank you. Our room is configured a little bit differently this time. Is anyone here to speak for this project? Step off to the podium, do your manual handout for the record.
I have to ask the whole, make person?
Yes.
I ran into them, I know six of them, she's driving, Monroe City, two hundred and fifty.
And you're here to, we've got some new members.
I represent Perry and Porter, he is properly doing stuff.
Good, thank you. Tell us what you want to do here.
Um, we're proposing to get changed other votes, but we can build a concrete plant facility there. Um, Thomas Concrete is driving aside of this, that's the site facility. Um, like I said, it will also be not only the plants with the silos, but we'll have to have a small building that will be a black house, dry floor area, and storage for chemicals.
This expansion of the other plan or?
Well, we did with Thomas.
I'm just curious, if you have another concrete plant there, why is it already designated that you have done? Why do you have to do it and they didn't?
The existing concrete plant is granted by one.
Granted by the.
Questions for the, I'm gonna mention again, am I missing something about the road there? I didn't go any time to talk to them today. That's a heavy road, heavy equipment.
But all of that, that old street is welcome, there were hours in it, truck and trucks, and I was getting ready to game. So it's basically the same thing as what's going on in there now. It's got a truck or truck, you run shorter trucks and that. And so.
It's still one.
It will be more traffic, right? I agree, I agree, they'll be more traffic on the streets, but I mean, it's, as far as weight wise, it would be the same thing as it is in there.
Megan, is that up to him about the road, or does he have to go to the city and has the city to repay it or fix it or whatever? His responsibility for the road?
So it's the city's road, so the city's providing the cost for me.
Or engineering department. A budget I think is like a billion two every year. So taking quite a bit of that budget as a maybe necessary for an engineer to request a budget settlement, just to upgrade that road.
Instead of everybody, you could have a group that would have come to us to begin with.
Other, I believe, I don't speak for staff, I believe the recommendation based on the land usage, they may or may not take into consideration.
And Lisa's going to tell us.
There, Lindsay?
No, I'm gonna fix your volume, so we make sure we're in a rhetorical.
You gonna make that road or what?
I don't have any conversation that you'll speak of, because these speakers, they have to pick you up when you're having conversations. But it's not like we're in the other rows, where we have a microphone right in front of you. It's not gonna, it doesn't do like that.
I can't answer any of the questions about street paving and money and sorry.
Well, I'd say it's a valid concern that we do have to consider. Do we move forward with rezoning and then leave it to the city to worry about fixing the road? Or do we postpone the decision to get an answer from the city? That's something you have to ask yourself if you want to.
If you rezoned for that, then can more industrial, heavy equipment or whatever go out there along with this? Is it, yeah, open the door for more?
Where you have one?
No, what I'm saying, you know, can anybody else come and add on to that? Not, not this piece of property, but you know, further on down the road. It's a general rezoning, so if it's rezoned to heavy industrial and the concrete plant falls through, or they open and then they close, anything that's permitted by right in heavy industrial can go into that property by right.
And any other properties would still have to come back, and then we'd start to come out with that. Not, I mean, I have a lot of lineups, one of them. Passing rezoning and correcting or helping out this, but I do think that in future, that road, some, we, I feel that by going out there and riding and looking at it and seeing the condition of it, it's, it's going to need some attention sometime, so. And if we made him wait until the council, or you think there's something wrong with that?
Well, just so y'all, I don't have to worry with y'all over the park, I mean, go when it was the, like, within the last eight months, this project has already been approved for sixty thousand square foot commercial building, you're loading dogs and everything pretty much approved. They were ready for planning, but we're calling that expense of having to pad up a building, you know, sixty thousand square foot area, and he's like, I'm not good with this. So he's gone to stitch, so whether I went in and tried to try to just, I'll fix it or fix it. Whether it's me or whatever company, it's a big issue, you know?
Yeah, your, your use isn't necessarily going to create more road use than, than a truck storage facility. And they're the ones, they're the ones. Understand that. They're the ones that's going to be using that road. I don't, I don't see table in it.
Oh, no, no.
Not, not, we're, I think what we need is, we need to have a footnote, if you will, in minutes. I agree. That the city engineering department needs to assess the road and road improvements are warranted. But that's a legislative decision. But if it's in our notes, in our minutes, then they're going to notice that we paid.
That we addressed it.
We addressed it, and it needs, something that needs to be addressed by the engineering department, whether through a special budget or the existing Monroe Vicents funds, but that's about all we can do is indicate additional actions. I have no problems. There's a footnote on your versions. You were much, much, yeah. Well, no, not that, yeah, we've heard one, four. Any more questions for the gentleman in front of us? Is there anyone here who wanted to speak against this rezoning? They not noting any, then I'll put this comments session, and now we'll move on to discussions. Any more discussions on the issue? I don't think so, they're the ones that have to deal with the road, and we can put that in our, in our notes, you know, we're approving this. The road is returning, let's just think that it's a picture, that, that one, yeah. I agree. And just for my own, y'all know my position in the past, and it's only vision that I've had, I've never not gone to a site. So I thought, oh, I always go down to that, so I was trying to bring the force in to find the passing, but there was an issue that I put the city, they had a, but I do go to all the sites for that.
So wait.
We need to get a bus. Yeah, Lisa, get us a, a planning board of us. That'll get them going over there. I just came out of the budget. All right, well, in that case, I'm open to motions.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the adoption of a resolution approving the land use and transportation plan compliance. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the resolution for land use and transportation plan compliance. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed.
All right, I'd like to make the motion to recommend the adoption of the ordinance amending section one five seven dot one dot two dot one, official zoning map with the footnote, added footnote that the planning board understands that this is a road that they need attention from the city in their identity. So.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to recommend adoption of the ordinance amending section one five seven point one, point two, point one, with a footnote, the planning board recommends that the engineering department inspect the roadway accessing the property for necessary improvements. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Next motion, I'm on the agenda, zoning map amendment for property located at five eleven Fowler Road, further identified as tax parcel ID zero nine dash two one zero dash zero zero three F. This request is to rezone the property from regional corridor mixed use, RC MX, residential low density, RLD.
Good evening, Megan, my name is Megan Brightard with the planning department. Tonight I'm here to present a zoning map amendment request regarding the property located at five eleven Fowler Road. The subject property is located south of Fowler Road and west of Ridge Road. The applicant is requesting a general rezoning of the subject property from RC dash MX, regional corridor mixed use, to RLD, residential low density. The property is currently undeveloped. The proposed use is not permitted in RC dash MX, which the property is currently zoned. Parcels continuing to the subject property are zoned RC dash MX. Parcels to the north are outside of the city Monroe's city limits and zoning jurisdiction. The parcels that are brown are zoned RA forty, which is a Union County zoning, and the parcels in the green are Union. The land use and transportation plan indicates this area as suburban. While residential uses typically take a form of neighborhoods with uniform housing types and densities, a mix of housing types and lot sizes are preferred in suburban locations. Commercial developments mostly serve the needs of nearby residents and often locate along corridors with higher traffic volumes and meet prominent intersections. Emphasis to be placed on the integration, integrating the design of commercial centers with surrounding neighborhoods. Planning staff believes the request is consistent with the land use and transportation plan because the proposed rezoning to RLD will allow the applicant to establish a residential use in an area designated for residential development. A rezoning notification sign will be posted ten days prior to the public hearing, and an official rezoning notification letter will be sent to the adjacent property owners located within one hundred fifty feet ten days prior to the public hearing. Planning staff recommends approval of the rezoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well. Sorry, planning board will need to take action on the items that are listed on the board as well.
Any questions for staff? Yeah, I'm a little confused. The city has received a request, rezone the subject property to RC MX, the residential low density.
Yeah.
Right? The RC MX is intended to permit the intense concentration of retail deployment and high density residential use. So I'm confused about the low density.
The applicant wants to rezonate to low density that's not permitted in RC.
Okay, the RC has.
RC dash MX, it allows multifamily and pockets to be residences.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Megan, this RLC low density, is there a size that the lots have to be? It just says larger lots. Well, something two acres too, so.
How many, you've got two acres?
Well, you could be a lot, if you just pretend that it's, it's got a ten thousand square feet, so you've got a twenty thousand square feet, or you've got a forty thousand.
Can I make a point of clarification, perhaps, maybe? Um, RC MX is a regional core mixed use district. That is where we're going to see our higher density apartments, commercial restaurants. The applicant requests me to rezone the residential low density, which is a half acre minimum lot size, to build a single family home. So they're requesting you go from a higher intent, higher density, to a single family zoning district to build a home because it is not allowed in the current zoning.
So, so they're not necessarily going to do that?
Yes.
That's why they can do that.
That clarify.
Yes.
Okay.
I think they have a good point, but.
Yeah, I'm I'm your understanding. I'm gonna actually look at the question. I've been seeing why every zone. It changed it from place. Everybody came in because.
But already it like.
And just for clarification, current density, the way it is on now allows twelve units per acre. He's asking to go from twelve units acre to basically two, but I think it all let me clarify, they want to build a house.
Questions for staff? The applicant would like to step forward please.
Yes, sir.
Name and current address for the record when you get up there.
Good evening. My name is Ivan Neuram and I located.
Oh, you're gonna speak out.
That age is.
Some of us are a little older than the two, you know, here it's gone.
Exactly.
Uh, good evening, my name is Ivan Neuram. I'm located at two two zero one lavender metal support in Vando. And we purchased our property back in two thousand twenty-two. And we spent two years saving up for our home. We cleared a portion of the property to build a house on. We got accepted permit. We created a house plan within those two years that were saving up. And you know, she got a loan from American Bank, which is right across the street here. So we have everything in order. We have all the subs lined up, all the some trees ready to build. And we actually sold our home a few months ago. Uh, to move forward with building. And we moved into a rental, which is about three minutes away from our property. We have a lot invested in this, a lot, a lot of time, a lot of money. And if we. If we knew that it was a commercial property too, we wouldn't have. We wouldn't have invested all this time, all this effort. Paying for our house plan, paying through the law. And I went to full permits with Monroe, I gave him a call. That was the last step of the process before the break down for the house. And they informed me that the the property was a result of commercial. Uh, and. We bought a residential property, so it has got a result of commercial property without itself. And the next day after I called, they informed me of this, the bank gave me a call. They appraised our property, they appraised our house plans and they came in at seven fifty. And I believe that's a good. Good, a good thing for Monroe is to bring higher priced homes. Uh, luxury homes with Monroe, so we requested to rezone back to residential.
So you're just gonna build a one house on that, you're a mom?
Yes, so we want to build a house toward the front and leave the back more like a wooden area. Just uh, just.
So for clarity, I think what I heard you say is. You bought the property roughly two years ago and it was residential. So at the time, yes. And you started making your plans and saving your money and clearing the land. And during that time, it got rezoned on you without your knowledge?
Yes.
And then when you went to get your permit, you found out it's, you know, it was commercial.
We have, there's houses contained as well on either side, so. That was the last thing that would come to mind that is commercial property.
So you have to wait the whole, I'm sorry. Does he have to wait a full month until they go to the council before he can get started?
Yeah, we, we were not the approval or only the recommend authority, so.
But after that.
It's gonna take you two months because it has to be advertised.
In a bunch.
Yes.
In June.
Okay.
So at any rate. You want to build a home here that you've been saving and planning?
Yeah.
Yeah, we want you to.
I think we're all about that. But I gotta, I gotta put all the little checks in the block, so. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who wants to speak up against? Who you calling? None heard. Now I'm ready for questions. I'd like to make the motion to recommend adoption of a resolution approving land use and transportation plan compliance.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the land use and transportation plan compliance. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposed. I'd like to make a motion to recommend adoption of the ordinance amending section one five seven dot one dot two dot one, which we're zoning that.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded. To recommend adoption of the ordinance amending one five seven. Point one, point two, point one, official zoning map. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will go forward.
We're available for parties now.
Right. Don't forget to pull in the back.
Exactly right.
Next slide and on the agenda. Item number seven. A zoning text amendment. To, oh, excuse me, item six. Plan board request to consider zoning map amendment for the property located at four thirty-one. Morgan Mill Road and further identify as tax portal zero nine. One eight nine, zero three eight. From office medical OM to general business GB.
Hey, good evening, Patrick, please. Plan department here to bring forth to you all rezoning request four thirty-one Morgan Mill Road, in which the head of technical Walters is looking to rezone the point seven six three acre site. You can see here outlined in blue. Um, from its current zoning designation of OM office medical to GB or general business. The general business district is intended to accommodate a mixture of commercial, public, institutional, office medical uses. The property is currently occupied by an eight thousand square foot commercial building that was constructed in nineteen eighty-eight. It's presently vacant.
Is presently what?
Vacant.
Okay, what, what was there? What was that doing?
It used to have antique cars.
Oh.
I can't.
Oh, Frank, Frank's. And listen to.
Yes.
Moving on to the attachment two, zoning map for the area, again, the subject property is outlined here in blue. And it's OM for office medical. Uh, the parcels directly to the north, it's zone RHD, residential high density, currently houses, um, multi-family residential housing. The parcels to the east are zone GB for general business and house, um, commercial uses. Parcels to the south are zone OM office medical, has single family residential housing as well as commercial uses. And parcels to the west, left these sites, uh, are zone RMD. And OM, the RMD parcels have single family residential housing and the OM parcels, uh, currently have commercial establishments there. Catching three, the future land use, um, map to the area. The, um, center property again outlined here in blue falls under the traditional development to the future land use type. The only other. The land use in franchise, taking land and take serious traditional development, this form of development surrounds downtown core and is anchored by the city most sort of neighborhoods. This designation does allow for some small scale commercial and services uses that supports surrounding residences. Plan set, leave this request is consistent with the land use and transportation plan because commercial is a priority use. A rezoning notification sign will post it ten days prior to the public hearing and the official notification letter will be sent to the adjacent property owner located within one hundred feet. For owners, uh, ten days prior to the public hearing. The plan set does recommend the approval of the rezoning request. Uh, plan board willing to take action on these items. I had a blue with my pretty big last time. Uh, the applicant is also here if you have any questions as well. I hope you have any questions to myself.
I'm really interested in. Why it's so office medical?
So it's zone office medical that go approximately two years ago with the adoption of the current ordinance and the zoning map. This is the zoning designation that, um, was designated for this parcel at this time.
So that changed two years ago?
Yes.
Prior to that, it was.
Was his grandfather there?
I'll, I'll try to help. Um, let's see, was it here while we rezoned? The property was zoned office medical prior to this. And so when the new zoning map was done in two thousand twenty-two, um, that classification remained the same as the office medical. So it's basically the same as the old zoning that's just been moving. Uh, and that a lot of times the office medical is used in the transition to see higher intense commercial uses and sort of residential. And since there is a lot of residential that you see on the back side, you know, so there's some areas where it's commercial, but it's up to residential and some areas where office medical. But up to, uh, residential and this is just one location that that has office medical. Classification.
Been here about seventeen years. At least that many different businesses have been about. On both sides of the road in the OM areas there, including the Riley Auto Parts. I don't know with the, with the new office medicals. Complexes that they're going along, seven four. I don't think any. Medical uses will ever be down this portion of it. Morgan Mill, it desperately needs revitalization.
I agree.
And, uh, if somebody's got a great plan to turn it into something, I'm all behind in that. Uh, and if eliminating OM will help make that, I'm, I'm definitely for that. But let's, uh. Yeah, yeah, let's hear your petition. Let's hear the speaker. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Will Walters. Address two three one three Tanfield Drive, Matthew, North Carolina. Uh, and basically Carrie kind of spoke a lot to what I was gonna say. It's just right on the borderline area of transitioning from commercial to residential. And we feel that this property we bought as an investment. And in order for us bring other investments, investors into the property and get it, you know, back to something beneficial for the community. It doesn't serve to be office medical, no medical uses really that we found. Um, can go right there and, and work really, so it should be kind of opening up the land for, uh, for more positive use. As opposed to it just staying at an old warehouse.
Do you have a plan for what, what you want to put there?
Um, so we don't currently have a plan. Uh, we've been talking with other investors to, uh, come in and, and do certain different things. We've been talking with engineers as well as to how to move forward. But, um, at this time, we do not have a current, current future plan.
So you're just gonna lease it to somebody that would be interested in putting?
It would either be that or, or build something else there that would fit in the general business zoning.
I'm tired.
You're interested?
I know that everything that they do, that is very fast. Well, it needs something to, to get it going, it needs something in there. Something that will stay for a while and actually generate these other businesses to spur up.
Right.
And while they put those houses on the other side.
Well, I don't see that either.
We, we, that. Yeah.
You don't tear it down and put four houses on?
Done.
Okay, great.
Be hard to do if the zoning were going after.
Yeah, yeah, it's business zoning, you see, wouldn't be able to put any. Those houses are going on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak for this project? One here to speak against it? Someone here to speak against it, so moving forward. Open for some of the. Motions.
Motion to recommend adoption of resolution approving land use and transportation plan compliance.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to recommend adoption. Uh, resolution approving land use transportation compliance. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or not opposed?
Motion to recommend adoption of the ordinance amending section one five seven point one point two point one, official zoning map.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to recommend adoption of the ordinance amending section one five seven. One one point two point one, official zoning. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Not opposed. Nowward.
Yep.
It's. So the item seven, zoning text amendment, Dakota ordinance. Title XV, land use seats, chapter one five seven, section seven point one. Table of permissionable uses, section seven point two point five. Public and institutional uses. Section seven point two point six, commercial uses. Section seven point two point seven, office and medical uses. Section seven point two point nine, other uses. And section eight point four point two, parking requirements in section eleven, definition and terms.
Well, that about summed up my presentation. Do you think, I know that you guys may have some questions. Um, and so I'll let you ask your specific questions, but. Um, good evening, I'm Carrie Mendler with the planning department. Um, tonight I am here to present a proposed text amendment to the various subsections that. Um, Chairman Deal just, uh, went over. Um, so staff, just to give a broad overview, we are proposing some additional uses and associated definitions and standards. Um, just a couple of examples would be catering, the compulsory kitchens. Um, we added some information about tobacco and vape establishments. Um, uses involving cannabis or CBD sales. Um, community centers, uh, we're proposing to kind of mix up some uses or separate them out for different event venues based off of their size. Um, and so basically there's a couple of different sections, but they're all interrelated and connected. So section seven point one is our table of uses. Um, basically just shows what usage and where it's allowed. Um, in, in which zoning district. Um, section seven point two point, uh, point five through, uh, seven point two point seven. And seven point two point nine, those lists, the actual specific uses, the definition of the use. As well as any supplementary requirements for those uses. Um, and then the eight point four point two are, that addresses parking requirements for each use that we've addressed, um, in the sections above that. And then lastly, there was section, um, eleven, which is, uh, definitions in general throughout the code. So we added a few definitions, um, general definitions specifically involving, um, hemp. And creon, uh, and cannabis and things like that. Um, so that, that really does conclude my presentation because I know there may be specific questions about specific uses. Um, and I didn't want to go into every single item. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you might have, um, about the information you have.
Just to add to what Carrie said, stated, this is probably the most reviewed. Text amendment that we've had come for us since the baby deal was approved. Uh, this has involved reviews by council members. Reviews by the. Monroe Police Department. The legal department, the planning department. And a lot of what's being attempted here is we don't want any more surprises. Like a methamphetamine in downtown, uh, Monroe. And it's, it puts the uses. For medical, back around medical areas for businesses, back around business areas. In particular, your seventy-four business corridor. It also anticipates, which we've seen a lot of movement lately, I sent some of the articles. Uh, where we now have the first medical marijuana dispensary in the state of North Carolina and the Indian. And, uh, the, uh, Biden administration has recently announced. A policy change to change. Uh, cannabis from a class one controlled substance to a class three controlled substance. So we are seeing very loudly and clearly. Movement towards what other states have seen in the legalization. Of medical marijuana, which has always stepped. To recreational sale of marijuana and cannabis products. So what this is trying to do is get ahead of that. And say when it is legal in the state, where it can go and who can sell it. It also, side bit. Regulates anything that is non-residential that's being proposed to go into residential areas. To require special use permits. So it receives a review, which means it's announced to the public, which means the public has not seen comment on it. Before it was met. And the issue where before, when you just, when it was just a permissible use. It comes down, get the business license and make the business, like the bake shop. Right across the street from the Grove High School. This now puts. Limits on how close those things can be, the schools, the playgrounds, the churches. Public facilities, so we won't have anymore. We certainly wouldn't want that bake shop to start selling CBD and marijuana and all that right across the street from the high school. So it's a very proactive document that a lot of people have spent a lot of time. Myself included, I was involved in the, in one of the meetings. That reviewed this to get, uh, marijuana. And again, if you're not familiar with what, uh, creon is. It's, it's basically a legal herb. That used in certain quantities, it comes in a loosening. It's basically for pain, like CBD is. But it can very easily be abused. But it's legal to sell. And if they're gonna sell it, it should be, uh, a, a shop on seven four, not the. Video room, building right a block and a half here.
Pharmacy selling? Or could they?
No, pharmacies don't bother selling it because they look at it kind of like a pirate drink. They just don't wanna. They know the effects of it.
That would be a whole lot more control then if it was. Cause people, I mean, people that have cancer, that could, you know, but I, I, I think that is something that anything that would ease their pain. But I don't want it distributed through vape shops and, you know, other places that are going down the, in the street and behind it.
As long as the pharmaceutical industry has a lock on pharmaceutical dispensaries. I don't see a lot of pharmacies doing that unless they're like Monroe Pharmacy that they're with a family business. They could decide one day they want to sell it, this would not let them sell it. Their grandfather in the Dallas is right now. So, so what, what happened?
It's gone.
Killed.
They're gone.
That we did in the special meeting, so it had a, that did away with it. They didn't have their paperwork in order before it became unauthorized to do, so. Now, they still go in, it's gonna be closer to the hospital somewhere.
And that's where it should be.
A lot, uh, a lot of the efforts of, of the city and the, and the department. Uten and others who are involved, you, you can tell with the regular, the, 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 the forethought. Uh, to put this together, I think it's, uh, it's, it's. It's nice to be proactive instead of reactive. Yeah, the citizens won't know. The, the heartache would probably save them if North Carolina moves to. Authorize an open sale of cannabis, but with the class three designation. It is possible that drugstores could start. Carrying it one day from the business companies because now it's gonna start receiving medical research. And. You've never really established that it's a medical substance. And now the Food and Drug Administration is gonna have to do that. Who knows where?
Well, the thing I saw when we weren't, it's a, it's a class three, but then the same class is not enough.
Uh, well, it's. I don't know what could. Which is for sure, uh, not over.
I didn't say that.
It's time. All I know is the last cruise I was on in the world. Lot of old brown. Lot of people in black homes, so.
Lot of people.
It's like, so if you go outside that ten mile limit. Black home is a little. Really broken about, Carrie, the only concern I have is, you know, for the illiterate people. Which I, I'll go into that category of the, so. When we drop the, I know that CBD is a derivative of cannabis. But if we, what's wrong with you with just clarifying. CBD by adding it. On.
The one for the cannabis, creon, creon marijuana.
And then, then there's no question that, that it includes CBD.
And that.
You guys did fantastic work on this, really, really good. I applaud you. We got a burger. I think we got. We'll never see him coming because they're not gonna come. Assuming that the city council.
There's an amount, you're satisfied with everything that's here.
Yes, very satisfied. You gotta realize, anything you don't regulate is legal and compatible. And if you have a regulation, we can't necessarily prohibit this stuff from saying where it's gotta go.
Exactly.
And we got it in our video and that's where it goes.
So the motion. Number two just takes in all other things. We don't have to go through one at a time.
Yeah, two, two motions.
Right, the number two.
Yeah, I think you gotta go to bit of it. Just to clarify. Yeah, it's on, yeah, two motions. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the land use and transportation plan compliance.
Second.
Motion's been made, uh, made and seconded to adopt a resolution approving land use and transportation plan compliance. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. And those opposed. Okay, I'd like to make the motion to adopt the ordinance amending uh Code of Ordinances Title Nine Land Uses, Chapter One Five Seven. Section seven dot one, table of permissible uses, sections uh seven dot two dot five, public and institutional uses. Section seven dot two dot six, commercial uses. Section seven dot two dot seven, office and medical uses. Section seven dot two dot nine, other uses. And section eight dot four dot two, parking requirements. And section eleven, the definition of terms. Oh, that is good. Okay, I mentioned the code of ordinance is Title Fifteen Land Uses. That's absolutely the top one. Motion's been made and seconded to uh recommend adoption of the ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Uh, Title Fifteen Land Uses, Chapter One Five Seven. Uh, section seven dot one, seven point two point five, seven point two point six, seven point two point seven, seven point two point nine, eight point four point two. And section eleven, definition of terms, with one amendment to include uh C V D and the cannabis. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Close. Next item up on the agenda is U D O discussions. Talked about what we want to see from the technical review committee on their future developments coming forward so we can, things went roads and roads conditions and and what our thoughts are. Does anybody have any things they want to add to that?
Well, that in the last meeting, two meetings, when we discussed the nervous road property and all of those parts. I'd like for us to look at the U D O and see if we can uh do something to make it so that all uh multi-family uh proposals have to come before planning board and city council rather than having four, forty-nine uh apartments available without going through the process. Because we really, we really do have enough apartments. And that's charter knowledge. We need to get to the point where people are starting to look at executives for these industries that are coming in it so that they can not go to Charlotte, you know. So if we can do that, looking at that, you know, not further pressure.
We should take a look at that. Lisa, you can probably tell me if I'm correct or not. Uh, multi-family homes are basically the same as single family homes. If there's forty-nine or less units, they go through your department. If they're fifty or more, they go through the planning board and city council for approval.
The the multi-family are classified as units and not lots. So multi-family development, if that's a permissible use in the zoning district, then it's allowed at a staff level. Um, now you're speaking of the single family developments where there are actually lots of forty-nine and over. Then it goes through the special process. Right now you have your mixed use districts like downtown that allows multi-family development as a permissible use because you want that identity residential use to bring that foot traffic to support your downtown. So if you're moving, looking to move forward of requiring multi-family development, all multi-family apartments and development that go through that special process, that's what you need to do.
That's what you're talking about.
Yes, please. Can a mortuary get involved in any, you know, stop any of the work apartments and like these apartments that are out there of land where the wind density used to be that are coming up and all those things that are in the ground that have not been built yet, I need to try and think of there, but hopefully it's going to be, you know.
There is no more authority, we can put that would be a legislative ad of City Council.
Listen, thank you, I think you're talking about gridiron townhomes. Those were approved through planning board and.
All their challenges, yeah, their apartments.
Running town.
Yeah, still. They do.
I have talked to several people about, I, I, I have a real problem with forty-foot wide lots and five feet on the property line. And I just think that is totally nonsense, especially if you build a five feet on the property line, ten feet behind the, between the homes. Uh, there's fire, shit, wind blows, you know, problem. Uh, but then they send the one hood, the air conditioning, the twenty homes, you know, but you can't build a bill back there. So I just, I, I think that's something that needs a little, the U D O as well. I don't know if the change occurred maybe with the city council, but I just don't think especially now that the issues that comes out uh with material infrastructure, the city business, home game and that places that have people come to that device. You might as well get the best product, possibly ten uh because you can. And we should deserve that, uh, they require that, but I, I just have a problem with forty feet. I don't know if that can be changed, I don't know if that's a state uh mandate or to the building code of the state and the city, it puts that in place to when some houses are taller than a lot as wide, that's just a problem, especially what big issue I have is five feet off the block. I had it just about, so.
A lot of sending right now, I mean, in the U D O convention doesn't allow that. What you're, what you've been seeing, what, what you're talking about really is the additional district control where a developer comes in and doesn't want to build by code, he wants allowances made. It's, that it's his, his vision of, of his project and the land where he wants to build it. And they apply for a uh planned urban development, F U D, which is what we see a lot of. And what F U D does is the U D O has special requirements on development of F U D. But it also opens all of our zoning standards to negotiation. And what we've seen happen is the forty-foot wide lots in zoning areas that should be seventy-five foot wide lots or hundred foot wide lots, depending on just low density or median density. And the U D O puts some fifteen foot off the property line, but they all want to come in and want to reduce the size to thirty-four and five, reduce. We have to review it as a body, we have the majority rules on a no, if they won't budge. We try to negotiate them to come back up, but they're on dollar signs, their minds are on dollar signs. So we have to say, well, you know, your vote's your vote, my vote's my vote, your vote's your vote. And if you say, I'm, I'm like you, I don't like forty-foot wide lots when they're supposed to be seventy-five or under. I don't like five foot off the property line when they're supposed to be fifteen. And, and we know.
Hold your ground.
We, we vote on it, we accept, we have to fill out a court. Every piece of property doesn't fit in every square box or in the round hole. You have to have some, some provision that, that a property owner can, that can come in and lobby and develop his property.
Most of those have wetlands and some property that they can't build on and they use that to give us a this number of so many houses per acre. But if you actually take how many acres there are and about a number of homes, I mean, it's crazy, or if you take what they're actually building on, take the number of homes and it comes down to fourteen houses to a square inch. Well, they're going to use it all for density and they want to cluster develop it. Now, I don't think also helps them because they don't have to run the sewer so far, they don't run the water so far, it's all clustered together, that's why they like to do it. My concern is how does this build with Mark Brody pass that office?
I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
It's the one where um, you know, I don't even, but do you remember the building Mark Brody passed?
That's a portion where you can actually build fifty percent of the, the main structure behind your house as long as it's less than fifty percent tied to water and sewer. Cowboys are passing.
Yeah, with mother-in-law who is basically.
I'm only somewhat familiar with that, I don't, do you know anything about it Lisa?
There are small lots and build on them now in the city. They don't have to meet zoning requirements.
If they're a good thing, if I had a lot, then you can meet the setback requirement, you can fill in a lot. But if you're going to subdivide a piece of property, it would have to be a propensity on this off size. And um, Mr. Iver, your point about the density thing, we did do a text amendment, I think it was prior to you coming back on the uh, on the board, where we do take out certain things to account for some of that, like string buffers, utility defense and right away.
Yeah.
What you're actually suggesting is go a step further and do a way with more non-buildable land to be used as dense, it's fine for open space, but be used as open space.
The percentage of the property used, there's one of those four, three, four years ago. We had one that was, I don't know, third, with thousands on it, in thirds without, and all of that without.
I think another thing too that sort of offset a little bit of that as well, that our open space standards are much more stringent than they used to be. Um, and so some of that flood plain or wetlands, only a certain percentage of that can actually count towards your usable open space. Which means you may have to, you know, have more open as well.
So our space requirement, since the U D O came out, the dead text method doesn't. But yeah, we should look in, into whether or not we want to include flood plain in the density calculations.
Well, I heard you mention for that, or less homes, uh, they don't have to come forward with a right move. But it's just by right. Yet they need building standards, it's by right. What if you have two groups, forty-nine, forty-nine, put them two of the things and then a building, gang of the system, you know. What, what, what is possible to, where does forty-nine come up and you go out saying twenty-five? Or can you?
But we can recommend that we come together as a lot, recommend that as a going forward texting.
I will, well, I will say, you certainly can recommend that. I caution you, you guys know how much Carolina state legislators are about property rights. But you've heard of it.
What, what, uh, six houses by right, that's that a good condition.
Yeah, you know the places.
That is sorry, that, that road has already gone down.
That's, but what Kerry's referring to is we've seen what the lobbyists do when they see the municipalities getting tough in certain areas. They lobby Raleigh and, and take it away from us. This is what happened with our, our minimum square footage requirement. If you wanted to build a house in an existing neighborhood and, and the surrounding homes were four thousand square foot homes, you had to build a four thousand square foot home. If they took the surrounding properties, add them together and then divided them by that number. He came up with what the minimum square footage, they took that away from us because so now, you know, right next door to my forty-two hundred square foot home, they could put up a seven hundred and fifty square foot tiny house if they wanted to or something, they could do it like that. Because that small of a house is going to mean all the setback requirements, all the open space, all the buffers, everything. Uh, it's, it's dangerous what Raleigh can do, but I'm kind of like you, pushing for the cows. They want to snap back, let them snap back.
We, we've been asking more and more from our developers and we've seen it's been to the point where they know now they come aboard, where it's making a tough thing.
Because it used to be the same old, well, you know, we checked everything and this is what is growing in Monroe, these three hundred thousand dollar homes or two fifty or whatever. This is.
Exactly.
Number worked very well for them.
It's not for us.
Yeah, but it's only a lot of pressure, put them on those conditions, some, some land account that they're following on the addicts and the, the dollars and.
Yeah, but then the county doesn't have to spend any money and they get.
Well, they don't, they're going to bring it forward, I'm just saying, we got, Monroe is a very, very unique situation.
We're not taking advantage.
Infrastructure, nobody else does.
And we need to start focusing on our industry, on what's inside the city limits.
You gotta be stingy with it before we run. So what is possible, the role of the league, would that go out possibility, drop it for forty-nine or another one? I'm actually thinking of another one, I'll be working there. But I just see that as a, a problem coming forward later on.
Kerry, where did that number comes to?
I think it was, and all of the people.
I think the number was thrown out there by planning board and council members. And that's what we landed on, that anything fifty lots and over would go through a special process, so that's what kind of that.
That originated with them because I, it was on, on the city council. Often the members of the planning board, myself included, get control of the bill by right. And it all culminated from the uh housing that started popping up behind the road law. And, and the city council was getting beat up about it and the city council didn't know anything about it. Because the new U D O gave the, the approving authority for that to the planning department. Planning department does what they're told in the ordinance, they're handed an ordinance. This is what your job is, they did your job. People didn't like it, started beating up on council members, there is some council members said, well, we need to start seeing this stuff. Well, then you need to change the U D O and take their authority back. And through negotiation, it went from uh anything over a hundred to basically anything over there. But that's a number that, that was established through negotiation between uh, planning staff, the planning board and the city council. So it's always open for a good. But I would like, talk to your representative.
Say what?
We disagree a lot of that. So, because everybody, what's it, how do I get a copy of it?
Um, it, there's a copy online and then we can print you a copy if you want, one in about four hundred something.
Have them, I don't think using a computer. I thought I do.
Control F for finding keywords is a very handy thing, just throwing that.
It's one of them.
I said, control F is a very findy tool when you want to search for specific words, but.
I found that control all the weed works.
Don't be that, don't be that, don't be that, but yeah, we can print you a copy.
If we want banking as a board, pursue, plumber and the government.
Yes.
I think we, you know, we should never make knee jerk motions. But this is what we're discussing, is what we want to think about and discuss.
And look into.
So now that we, we've come up with these topics, we should all go our separate ways or break up into groups, please no more than three. Don't want to violate any core rules. And, and review each one of these things and we'll come back and, and talk with the rest of the board. When we think we're ready to vote on something, we'll vote on it. And then we've got to give staff reasonable time to come up with their position on it and, and write it up. Which tells us why we're, we're wrong.
We probably should work with staff while we're discussing so that, you know, throw under it and it says, do this and they can come up with something they can't. The legislation of some however.
Do you suggest that work session? So you suggested work session. We, we, we.
Well, Lisa's laughing. Well, I'm just, um, being honest, planning staff has already gone through the whole unified development ordinance process. We spent, um, made months and time and money with a consulting firm. It's been, you know, we do bring forward text amendments as we work with the ordinance and things need to be changed. I mean, y'all have seen several text amendments come before you and we will continue to do that as we, you know, have different, uh, businesses in downtown that wanna do different items and we realize, oh, we can really think about that, we need to fix this part or so forth. Um, this is your discussion. I mean, we're, we're not going to make any decisions on or recommendations regarding taking the by right development of less than fifty and requiring a special process. That will be this board's decision they carried forward because we've already worked through the unified development ordinance. Um, the fifty and over, um, fifty lots and over that requires a special process, that was planning board and council. If it's your discretion that you want to modify and change that, then that will be this board to move forward.
Okay. They gotta remove on liquids.
I know.
So now that you said three more, I'm just asking, so does this board follow the building's law or?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, that's why we can't beat more than three at a time and not act. But we have the ability to call special people to discuss and and get deeper into each one of these subjects. And we may wanna do that, is if we, if we feel Mary Ann's recommendation on multi-use might be a discussion.
Makes it dangerous.
That needs to be addressed full time, you know, we come together for an hour to it. We can call special people to do that. Hopefully be able to use the conference room here before we get.
Bus.
For the bus, the bus. Forty bus, yeah.
So, just for clarification, the lot situation, is that something as a board that you are asking staff to move forward with?
Be a knee-jerk reaction to, to gentile it right now.
Yeah, what Lisa's saying is if we need to do this for.
Right. Let's just discuss that some of that before we go.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that staff knows what you're asking us to do or not, so.
What I will do is, is I've heard your subject matters. Is where on the agenda where it says U D O discussions, I'll ask staff to start putting, putting looks on their discussion on multi-use and then we'll just talk about the one.
And the, the related U D O pieces of paper. That Lisa's shaking her head, she knows what I'm having.
Lisa, you might as well just stop that. I, I really like that. I'm gonna say the same thing as you were, you were saying it. Um, are you asking for, um, whatever topics that you decide to put on the agenda that you want to discuss, we can certainly bring forward those sections on, of the ordinance, um, planning staff's reasonings of why it was put in there and then that will kind of set the foundation for your discussions. Is that kinda what you're?
Yes.
We'll just need to know those items, of course, in advance that we can prepare for and then it will be to y'all to discuss and make any decisions.
So these, uh, zoning requests that were framed, I think are all announced. The votes passed that served in the past and came before us from recognition from the planning board. If it was, uh, seventy, it was seventy. It was five points, five four. It wasn't, it passed. Or failed, but we, we were always, the legislative body was always formed of how the numbers broke down. Is that how this operates, let's go to the town council?
Yeah, we typically, typically we will put the vote as far as five or.
It'll be in there and also if you reject a project, you have to write down why. So y'all go and see the town council, you put down that it was in that and so forth, it was six to one.
And who?
And we include, well, and typically too, we're a little bit behind on our meeting minutes because we're down in patent right now. But typically the, the meeting minutes for the, the item is part of the council's packet as well. So they have the meeting minutes for that item in their, like that specific item in the, the package.
And I'm bringing up a saying, if people wanna laugh like Lisa.
No, I mean, I think they think they're. Things change every year too.
It is all of y'all, my agenda item that I want you guys to think about. And it's basically the, the T R C process is, I wanna make sure that the T R C process is completed, one hundred percent completed, so staff can make their recommendation. And there are things that need to be reported to the, to the board in a written report. And I know that there's a written report that council gets, maybe we can look at that, see if we wanna adopt that or amend that or whatever. But none of the developments coming forward are free. We need, you know, let's, let's think about the city as a business. With city councils and board of directors and then they get the staff and board of recommendations body. But the way that the cost of development is, you know, if, if we're a lawyer, you do billable hours and the billable hours would be, how much does it cost me to deliver that product? That product with salary and wages and benefits and patrol cars and fire engines and we need to help build another fire station because we are annexing a property that's outside the response time for the fire department. Well, there's a whole fire station cost involved. The citizens, I get beat up all the time. How much do these things cost them to build? Well, if I'm a businessman, I'm providing you a pleasure, I have to think about how many hours my employees are gonna work on, that's a cost that I have to pass them to the customer. The materials involved is a cost I have to pass on to the customer. And, uh, the customers require to build a lot of this stuff on site, like sewers. But they don't necessarily build pump houses for the pumps that moves out. Or the water towers that provide the water pressure to get the water there. We may have lots of water. We may have lots of electricity, but they all require transformers and substations and and these massive spools of three hundred thousand dollar electric wire that's running underground in there. That our energy department does everything electrical for these developments. So all these things together should come up with a cost of a unit. If you're, if you're building a house, it doesn't matter if it's a thousand square feet or three thousand square feet, it needs two hundred and forty volts of electricity. That's wire, that's panel box and a meter. What does that stuff cost us? That's how much it costs us to build something. I'd like to know, and, and when we provide this stuff, we don't recoup that cost. That's money, our money that we're giving away to a developer and making rent.
When in our case, the cost gets passed out to the taxpayer.
Oh, yeah, right.
Anytime they have to come to you now for money that's coming out of your pocket.
Exactly.
Energy services will tell you, well, we do a val curve, standard industry practice. It's not law, it's not required. Industry practice, that if the tax base is gonna get us that money back in five years, then we're happy with that.
But if the tax, but if, if the residents aren't sufficient to bring in enough tax dollars to cover possibly services that are receiving, then we're not gonna make good business. We're gonna keep thinking.
That's why it's back basis. And, and, and unfortunately, North Carolina allows charge of impact fees. But there are other ways and fees, other ways to assess fees, to get some of that money back. That's council's job.
They're not taxing yet.
Right, that's council's job. My point is, is council right now, when engineering or, or electrical needs four hundred thousand dollar transformers, they go to council and ask to move money over purchase transformer. And council, all the way here is you approve this project, now we need four, four hundred thousand dollar transformers to support it. Give me the money, let's move money from our future infrastructures money, which is supposed to be making our lives better. But now we're spending it to enrich the developer so that he can build. That's a cost, that's an upfront cost.
We should charge the, the builder then.
Well, state allowed that fee and the system development fees, I think, yeah, hundred gives what, forty-nine hundred dollars a lot?
Get out a planning wheelhouse, talk about all that.
Well, I know, and that's the T R C's job. You're the boss, the expert out there.
Are we gonna be able to get the T R C reports?
If we write it into the U D O, we are, yes.
Okay, so how do we do that?
Well, this is the first step.
Okay.
This, this is my recommendation and it may not be word perfect of how to, how to do that.
I've already read it about six, seven years.
We, just to. There were, the reports of asking a cost estimate from each department in their development review process is not a U D O fact. That is more of a policy as to whether the city's gonna move forward with that practice. And that would be, that would be a management and council decision. It's, that's not something that we would put in the U D O. Um, I mean, I, I know what your thoughts are.
The U D O is just to require the report.
Yeah.
As far as what's going in it, yeah, that's, that's.
The U D O can require the reporting from different departments to provide cost estimates.
No, just require to report from T R C.
I, I think the T R C is great. I'm not backing it. I think it's great. My only concern is, it's another layer that we put on for anybody developing anything. I hear complaints a lot from people developing, well, the city has taken me so long, the city can't get this stuff, it's making it best, it's all this kind of stuff. I just want this to be able to be done in a, so we have that in time we have, so we're not backing up things three and a half months.
Exactly.
Because we tend to hear that all the time.
All the time.
All cities thinking forever, this is way before that.
And, and just to, for clarification, the, the tech, the T R C, the technical review committee, that is a, that is, um, representative from each department that reviews the plans. So if the development comes in, uh, energy service is gonna review that development based on their ordinance requirements, planning, engineering, so forth. When all departments are done reviewing the development and all comments have been addressed, that's when the project is either approved, if it's a staff level project, or it comes before planning board, or then city council provides a decision. So when you say T R C report, really the only thing that's gonna be reported from each department is developments met all ordinance requirements. So there's, you see what I'm saying, there's not really necessarily a report. Um, I don't know if there's another way to accomplish of what you're trying to do, but there's not a specific report if they've completed all the different departments ordinance standards. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Um.
Well, like the water resources department, they do that the buyer's road apartment complex would require seventy thousand gallons per day wastewater treatment, uh, material movement. They know, the departments know what, what it's gonna cost them to process in chemicals and in capacity to get that to the treatment plant. They already know that stuff, they're just not reporting. They're not telling us, you know, the energy service department knows exactly, if you take, if I'm building my home, it's gonna cost them X amount of dollars to get electricity to my home. They know what a per unit cost is.
So you're back to the cost analysis report for development for each department and that's a policy that will have to come from management and council. Not necessarily something that's put in the U D O.
Does the city council pass, uh, what's the cost of the city?
We, um, the city, uh, has been providing, um, what's what we call it, is it the cost?
I think the cost analysis, but for anything we should.
It's a cost analysis for development projects that are, that are tied to annexations, but not for every development. And that is.
If the city council's getting it, I think we should see it before they see it because we should be considering the same things that the council are sitting, if we're gonna make a motion to approve and send it forward or to deny it.
And I understand what you're, what you're saying about, I do wanna remind the board that the planning board's task is to review developments as they comply with the land use. Not as to whether they have adequate funding for, or adequate capacity for water and sewer. And that's a legal, I hate legal kind of left, cause they could kind of clarify that a little bit more. Um, so we, I mean, the planning board, if you wanna clarify some more.
Well, I mean, like Lisa said, planning board is, is focusing on land use. Um, your recommendation body to the city council based off of land use issues. When you get into funding for various departments that no longer are necessarily related to the future, maybe they're gonna grow. Those are legislative things that the elected officials ultimately have to stay over. So we do understand what you're saying, but planning board is in land use focus, not citywide legislative budget funding.
Well, that's, uh, interesting because I remember, I've been on this planning board too long, but I remember when the land use development committee was formed, that met separately before the planning board met and they made recommendations to the planning board, whether it's been land use or not. Now that might have been a number of years ago. But I do remember that time. So now if our only job is to make sure it makes the land use, which is not really what I understood our job to be. In the resident. We're just looking at land use.
And that's with the land, the land use transportation plan combined statement, that's what you're reviewing is, does this proposal, is it in line with the future land use plan and transportation plan that the city adopted for its vision plan of land use?
When we were discussing that Myers Road and, and water resource and stockpiles, that one's odd, but.
Yeah.
It really was.
So to me, land use has to do with modern supply using electricity and services. Land use is, is trapped and I mean, you can't just decide that, well, yeah, it fits into the U D O, so it must be okay.
I agree with, you know, it once can be, but what it actually costs the city, the buy all.
Cause we're all taxpayers.
Yeah, and we need to know that.
Right.
We're the, we're the first public hearing, if you will, on a project. And if, if we know what a development has been a costless upfront cost, and that's part of our consideration as well as our review, then then the public hears that at the same time. And then they have time to go in front of the city council and give their opinion, their public opinion on that before it gets voted on. And right now, they don't get any of that information in either one of the reviews, either here or at city council. They find out about it, if they're paying attention, they find out about it two or three months later when city councils ask to move money around to support previously approved projects. I think we have a duty as a board to know.
Yeah, I do too, except, except, I think you need to do both sides of the coin. We need to know what it's gonna cost the city, but we also need to know how long the city's gonna recover it through tax money. I mean, it can be a wash, it's just somebody's using some money for a while, but that money's coming back. Does, I, I'm afraid if you tell the public that it's gonna cost, they're just gonna scream, they need to understand. They need to understand that it's going to pay for itself over a length of time at the beginning of the phone. If, if, if we're going to go out and ask, do you bring in enough money to provide the services? Then you're never going to recoup it. That's why they didn't, we need to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I was going to, uh, it's not. Well, I, I know what you're saying.
Okay, so I have to go home now. Tell us no.
Well, I think what I'm hearing, and I understand all of your sayings, but I'm also hearing, and what's your name again?
Karen.
Karen. I don't think we should make, we have, we have to make decisions based on information that has been, what's planned out, what is there. We can and cannot do what they can do, what they can't do. It's by right, but I don't think we can make decisions based on what the cost is. That's what the city council put, and then if they have water and sewers, if there's enough or if there's not, then again, that's going to go to the, to the city council and then decide. We take, you know, it's just like the schools are not responsible, the city is responsible, the county, but we're all taxpayers.
Yes, right.
So we're sitting here, well, I want to prove that as for the little kids in school, there's no school. And we have an apartment, that is not our job. So we have to walk the route by line as far as what we started to, what we tend to, depending on the vote.
Well, my, one of my concerns is like the project out in Myers Road. If, if, if you figured it out to the end, we had like, I believe, seven percent, we have water supply lift. We were up to ninety three, we had a seven percent lift. But if you figure out, if that development was built, you would have to build ten developments just like it to move that to the next degree. I mean, it sounds really bad, but when you really get down to the numbers and you figure it out. Um, that development out there would have taken very, very little of the capacity of water from the city. I'm afraid if you go into the, and tell the public these kinds of things, they're not going to, they're not going to understand it. They're going to, they're just going to say, oh, my gosh, they're taking a lot of water, so blah, 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 blah.
They do that.
Okay, exactly.
Yeah, they're doing that.
It is a danger to give them, I'm not saying public students, but it's a danger to give them too much.
Thank you, Ryan. I agree. I agree.
And then must be then give us to the federal. So this is where the land use committee.
Well, you know, the city isn't expanding sewer right now, that's positive. Well, Waxall, you know, the county's standing out there, but Marshall, city there is fast down, that's clearly a lot that the city is.
We ain't getting second nature, no.
Well, see, what you get in Marshall, you go to Monroe to the county. Now, most people realize Monroe, the county, um.
But we don't know what that's something.
Right.
But anyway, yeah.
We must, we take care of Monroe first.
We can negotiate with advantage of the process, how it's loaded by size, how much information they will allow us to have. Go from there. But it is a minimum that, that report that, or annexations that the city council gets. I think we should get that on any development coming for us so that we can consider that. Whether it's an annexation of a.
Well, so, you know, on the Myers Road, that we wanted to project, should we just have said that's not a good use of the land? So we could be better than, than single homes or, or a road.
We've already said that. We went through a citywide rezon, we went through a citywide rezon, and you basically said, this is the way we want to use our land.
But there's apartments out there.
So now they're coming to us and asking us, well, we disagree with you. We want to use it our way, not your way, and it became a negotiation. Well, they didn't negotiate well enough for us because we could easily see that they bought four parcels around it just to justify density, water down for density to build their apartment complexes. They never showed us a stick of what anything was going to look like inside. How good or bad it can be, just with this, with how many buildings there were.
Because they didn't change the color. Look like what y'all saying.
They give you, they give you pictures that look, oh, a lot nicer than it's going to show. Then it's going to be.
Exactly.
Not pretty rendered.
And black or white ones, you know, like it's.
Take a picture of this building that you have already built something. Well, didn't they do that, or that looked like Lousy Magazine, they put it wrong, yeah.
I'm going to send you all an email, go ahead and put it up, give you, just listing what I think you said your topics that you want to discuss. And if I miss anything, then you can reply just to me and say, oh, you missed this, and I'll add it on. And then when I think I got a good list, I'll send, so they know what you're talking about. We, we need the T R C process formalized where a project cannot come forward until all the T R C work is done and staff can give a recommendation. Because they base their recommendation on what all the departments tell them. Well, and I'm going to, I know I'm, I'm late to the conversation, and I'm, I'm being careful of what I say because I didn't hear it all. But you're right, yours.
What are you on? How many apartment buildings do you, do you like to build?
No, I, I think, I think the, the thing that is, y'all, and I know you, you guys wanted to buy. Right, and at the end of the day, unless council gives you all the authority to say you, you can demand X, Y, and Z before we approve that, you're not going to get, council has given you that authority. Yeah. I told you I was coming late to the conversation before. Um, but I also think that it's already built into the process that the, the director has gone through all these steps and before it's approved, y'all get that information. So the question is, is, you know, I don't necessarily think it's good practice for y'all to be able to say, I want to hear from this department or this department or this department. But I don't know whether the manager is going to make all the department is answerable to you guys. I say they won't. Uh, but the question is, is what I'm really here to do is, has the director gone through everything like that? And is, is there just a sheet that says, I've reviewed all these things and it meets all the criteria? And that's really what you're asked, is has it all been done? And that's, at the end of the day, if she says, yes, it has, then it's really up to council that everyone dig deeper. That's what I.
Well, I'm going to go one step further. So what y'all are asking for is to make sure you got all eyes, big throats and whatever, but then too long ago without, I cannot, maybe even oppose it. But y'all passed the subsidy without the zone, without the road approval being completed. Is that correct? Which one are you talking about, the one out there?
Zone one, Eagle's Rest.
Eagle's Rest did not have, you're, you're exactly right.
But, but Mr. Crowe said they would comply with anything and everything that, that they recommended.
So whatever D O T requires, we will do. But again, you said it's double standard. You can let that one go through without having all the eyes seen, because they won't have further hints.
And remember, we did not have a staff recommendation because the application was not complete. So they could not make a recommendation. But the developer insisted on going forward, and there was nothing in the U D O that precluded him from insisting that it go forward before it was done. That's what we're doing, we're saying, well, it's going to be done. You can, you can beat on the door all day long, but until the work is done, it doesn't go forward. The city council knew that the traffic wasn't finished, they ended up saying approve. Yeah, because they're, they won't even go down the political.
Yeah, I, I, I don't reason I brought that up is because what you want is to measure over eyes, right, teeth, bro.
Formal process is adhered to. And I, and I, but I actually didn't get it, that, that, that's the, that is probably a lone exception. It is not, I, to my knowledge, since I've been here, that's the only time I've ever heard anything going forward. And there was a big debate amongst you guys as to whether it would go forward or not. And that was why it, yeah, then it ended up three, three times, something like that. So there was no recommendation.
Four, three.
Yeah.
Four, three.
And actually, Richard, you know, from the position I came before, it never would have come. If it hadn't, if it had not have all the eyes and all the teeth crossed, then there would have been all the planning board. Much less anyone else, unless it all been worked, everything done.
Well, I, I.
That's what I suppose it was, the process was.
I, I, I think that what, I think again, the question is, what I'm hearing you should tell me is that what you like to do is make sure that every, that the director has gone through every department and got every department recommendation, said this meets the criteria. That's really what y'all were, not necessarily that I want to hear the water department come in, the police department come in, or anything that. You, you want the record to say, I had checked these things and done these things and signed off on, is that what I'm hearing?
But that's what, that's what she does.
That's, that's what I'm saying. That, 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 that is what I'm saying, but, but for that one exception. I don't think, I think, I think we're, we're business a solution and search for problem.
That's me.
We beat that dead horse.
All right, I didn't mean to make it long.
No, that's fine. All right, our next meeting's on June the fifth. Is everybody available?
I think so, I think so.
We're probably going to need you or Louis at least.
Now, Louis is telling me I did, because Louis comes dressed in high heels, traditional shorts, and the Mexican. He may have misunderstood my dress code, he lived in, I'll probably try to act like that. I did tell, he asked me what to wear, I'm doing that, I'll be able to say. Okay, so he should have looked at us, but it's not my fault. Here's your, your problem.
What we do, we go to dress code then, we go to.
Louis had a couple of them, he's a lot of money, a lot of narcotics. Here's what I come like, what should I wear? So I paid that attention.
Ah, what dress code did you have? Oh, that's weird. I missed that.
And he said, I, I have a worn, a high heels and long house, I didn't hear that either.
That's still living in the sixties.
Uh, yeah, so you'll leave me June fifth.
I think we will, because I don't think the county will fill, uh, the E T J.
Just not live in city address. Well, right on, well, that's city.
Right on the last.
I did not have that.
You know, when I started doing, we always had a big E T J.
But you go right up the road, there's the, uh, the Food Line shopping center, that's in cities.
Well, part of M L K's and the county party.
The Food Line that used to be there, it's not there anymore, it's in the city. The new Food Line is not, or it is, it's annexed.
I know that.
So he's, he's.
That was Lamar House, remember that?
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, seven?
Seven.
Motion made in second, all is in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye. I was going to make a few that move.
Mark, you remember when you did.